This conference will now be recorded.
Are you ready? Welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting of September 5th, 2023. Call to order.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Here.
Councilmember Noah?
Here.
And councilmember Walchuk?
Here.
Mayor Wala Gora, excuse me.
Voice for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda.
Second, approval in second.
Mayor Protem Johnson? Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
And councilmember Walchuk?
Yes.
Are there any modifications to the agenda?
Yes, ma'am, there are. I would propose that we modify the agenda to flip 14B and C, you know, becoming B and B becoming C.
Board.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchuk?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Any questions or concerns with the minutes? Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items shall be allowed a maximum of five minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during council that citizens are allowed to address. Anyone? Anyone online, Charlie? Okay. So, to public hearing, the consent agenda. A, bills to be allowed in the amount of $501,699.47 and authorize Mayor Wala Gora and Clerk Sway to sign. B, mayoral appointment of Logan Kemp to the Planning Commission for a three-year term expiring on September 1st, 2026. C, council reappointment of Boris Gerber to the Wildlife Sanctuary for a three-year term expiring on September 1st, 2026. D, budget amendment request to carry over $19,077 from fiscal year 23 to fiscal year 24 in the General Fund for Police Department. E, budget amendment to request carryover of $5,500 from fiscal year 2023 to fiscal year 2024 in the General Fund for the Building and Grounds Department. F, budget amendment request to carry over $527,000 from fiscal year 23 to fiscal year 24 in the Marina Fund. And G, budget amendment request to carry over $17,900 from fiscal year 23 to fiscal year 24 in the General Fund for the Fire Department.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchuk?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Presentations, the City of Alpena Strategic Plan. Montiel Birmingham, Planning and Development and Zoning Director, will present.
Thank you. So, most of you, I think, are aware of some of the strategic planning work that has been ongoing over the last few years. It started shortly before I came on board with the city. And just wanted to provide an update on what we are and what some of our next steps are. So, as you know, we've been actively working on refreshing the city's strategic plan. These are internal planning documents that help staff implement the city's comprehensive plan. Some people refer to it as our master plan. Development of the plan was in coordination with Michigan State University. The plan included a community and staff survey, which asked for feedback as well as rankings on city services, weaknesses, strengths, opportunities, threats, and knowledge on key planning documents. Survey results were then followed by in-depth discussion on identifying city assets, needs, quick wins, and project volunteers. As a result of these sessions, the City of Alpena has chosen five priorities that address feedback from these surveys. Those five priorities are a starting point, so we'll look at addressing the other ones in the future, but we're starting with the top five. And those were also reviewed against the city's master plan, just to make sure that we were in alignment with what the greater goals were identified through the master plan. Those five identified priorities are listed here, which are revitalize the marina, provide housing for all, beautify the city, revitalize and expand the downtown, and revitalize city parks and provide more opportunities for recreation. One note on the recreation piece is that we are kicking off our recreation planning process right now, which is a little bit in advance of what we would have done in the past. And that's to align that plan with the county and all of the townships. So, that's a nice step in the right direction with that document. Additionally, the city partnered with all city staff to understand their perspective of the mission of local city government and identify the top five essential values that city employees should exemplify to support that mission. A mission statement was formed and values were identified, which demonstrate daily expectations. And the mission statement and the values, that was a survey that went out to all city employees, so 70-plus employees. We had a very good response rate, which was very positive. And after taking in all of their feedback, we put together a mission, sent it out to everyone to review, and then also consolidated all of their feedback and summarized that into distinct values as well. So, the mission statement is noted here. The City of Alpena provides services that promote a safe, clean, vibrant community that enhances the public's quality of life in a proactive and fiscally responsible manner. And the values, I won't read all of them and how we describe them. We felt it was important to actually have a description for all of them. So, when we're doing onboarding or anything like that, reviews, we have a description for each value, so everyone truly understands what is behind that value. And those values are integrity, accountability, transparency, dignity and respect, and culture of service. So, identifying the priorities, mission, and values are just the beginning. Staff is working on action items within each strategy, identifying those quick wins and long-term goals. The mission and values will be incorporated into city documents, employee onboarding, retention processes, recognition programs, leadership practices, employee work areas, city boards, et cetera. Individual departments are also working with their teams to create department-level mission statements that build from the citywide mission, and that will be coming in October. And so, we welcome your feedback and definitely appreciate any feedback that you have and want you all to hold us accountable to those values and that mission. Any questions you have on any of the information? Some of the documents that we included, so just summaries of what all of those are, those will be included in our budget document going forward. Is that for next year, Anna? Or, okay.
I think it's an excellent document. I emailed a few suggestions to Rachel, which were mostly typo things, but it's a really good document. And it holds us accountable, too. Not just... Appreciate that.
Thank you.
I just wanted to take a moment to recognize and thank Montiel for her organization and putting up the cats and, you know, really polishing up that document and making it presentable and getting to our mission and values. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we want to receive and file? Yeah.
So, I move we receive and file.
Support.
Councilmember Walchuk?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
And councilmember Noah?
Yes.
And next up is mayoral proclamation, and we have the Stephen Siller Tunnel to Towers Recognition Days. Are you here for that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So, I will read it. Whereas the Siller family started the Stephen Siller Tunnel to Towers Foundation to honor the memory of their brother Stephen, a New York City firefighter who lost his life on September 11th, 2001, after strapping on his gear and running through the Brooklyn Battery Tunnel to the Twin Towers. And whereas, the goal of the Stephen Siller Tunnel to Towers Foundation is to continue Stephen's legacy by supporting our nation's first responders and service members. And their mission is to honor the sacrifice of firefighter Stephen Siller, who laid down his life to save others on a September 11th, 2001, and to honor our military and our first responders, who continue to make the supreme sacrifice of life and limb for our country. And whereas, Building for America's Bravest, a program of the Stephen Siller Tunnel to Towers Foundation, constructs specially-adapted smart homes for our most catastrophically-injured service members. Each home is custom-designed to address the unique needs of each individual. Energy-efficient, automated, and easily accessible. These homes use adaptive technology to help our most severely-injured heroes live a better, more independent lives. And whereas, the Fallen First Responder Program supports the families of our law enforcement, firefighters, and emergency workers that lost their lives under extraordinary circumstances in the line of duty. And whereas, the Gold Star Family Program honors the legacy of those who made the ultimate sacrifice while serving our country. The foundation provides 100% mortgage-free home to the surviving spouse with young children. And whereas, the Tunnel to Towers 5K Walk/Run Series was created to retrace the final steps of Stephen Siller. The run-and-walk event pays homage to all first responders who made and continue to make extraordinary sacrifices in the line of duty. And whereas, the Alpena Tunnel to Towers 5K Run/Walk will be held on September 9th, 2023, starting at the BanShell at Bayview Park. Registration begins at 8:00 a.m. Now, therefore, I, Cindy Johnson, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor Protem of the City of Alpena, do hereby proclaim Saturday, September 9th, 2023, as Stephen Siller Tunnel to Towers Recognition Day in the City of Alpena, and encourage residents to participate in the event following the suggestions on the website or Facebook page, and support all of our local public safety officers and service members. And this is signed by me on the fifth day of September, 2023. So... They want us uptown. We have report of officers. Next up is Presque Township Advanced Support Ambulance/Transport Service Intergovernmental Agreement. Rachel Smolinski, City...
Thank you.
...manager. I just made it journey.
Thank you. The City of Alpena has historically provided advanced life support services to Presque Township Fire District Number 2, and you can see the map included as an attachment to the agreement. I've been in, well, it recently came to my attention that there was no agreement in place for these services. And so, I've been in communication with Presque Township and Chief Edmonds to help develop a temporary agreement for your consideration today. If Presque Township wishes to continue services beyond the initial 90-day period that we set out in this agreement, I will work with them to develop another agreement for your consideration in November. And that's all I have, and a recommended motion there.
Does anyone have questions?
I have a couple. Just want to make sure that we're covering everything. And mine was, you know, what were the fees and worked out here? Was that based on coverage that we have been doing or based on numbers of runs that we made into that community?
All of those things. So, yeah, we looked at the numbers, but we also looked at Alpena County and their mileage rates and divided that by the number of jurisdictions. And so, this is about half, or it would be about half, and we reduced that for the 90-day period, because half would be about 50,000. And so, we came to an agreement with them, you know, to present to you 4,000 per month. So, that's how we came up with that. Anything to add to that, Chief Edmonds? Okay. Yep.
Other questions?
I can a motion to...
I move that we approve the intergovernmental agreement for ALS, Ambulance/Transport Township, for Fire District Number 2 for the period of September 1st, 2023, through November 30th, 2023, and authorize Mayor Wala Gora to sign the agreement.
Support.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
And councilmember Walchuk?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, under new business, we have a Bingham Apartment Pilot, Montiel, Planning, Development, and Zoning Director, again.
Okay. In the fall of 2019, Hope Network submitted a request to utilize the property located at 555 South 5th Avenue for senior independent living apartments. The property was rezoned at that time to be a PUD, which is a planned unit development, and the site plans were approved at that time. The project was also granted a pilot at a rate of 4%. The ordinance specifies that construction of the housing development must commence no later than January 31st, 2023. Due to complexity of lining up all levels of financing, Hope Network was given an extension in February of 2023 to start construction by June 30th. Lining up documentation of funding to close on the project took longer than expected, and construction did not commence. Hope Network has advised that they are intending to close on the property in the next six to eight weeks and are requesting an extension for construction. In addition, during Mishda's review of the project, it was recommended to update the verbiage on the pilot related to the 25-year term. Staff discussed this with Mishda and is comfortable with the updated language. It is my recommendation that city council approve Hope Network's request to extend the construction timeline from June 30th, 2023 to no later than December 31st, 2024, and to also update the 25-year term language. And there's a recommended motion there for you. Tony Barker from Hope Network is also online and is happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Does someone want to go first?
Me, my goodness.
Hi, Tony, how are you?
Doing good, thank you.
Thank you for joining us. I just have a couple of questions. So, will you keep us up to date? I know that it says that you might purchase the property in the next six to eight weeks. Will we be notified if that happens?
Yeah, I try to talk to Montiel on a regular basis, just to keep her in the loop. What we're working through is just the financing, trying to get all the documents in order and hit the numbers. And so, we're, we work on it every day. And so, as fast as we can get this closed, we're going to try to do it. These are complicated closing, I just need to tell you this. We just completed one and took, it was like 30 lawyers, and it's just a lot. But we'll get there.
Okay. And trying to remember back, because we've done this for several years now. And there was a question that I had in the very beginning, when we gave, when we allowed the pilot to go through. And at that time, I think it was 3% we allowed, and then you came back and we raised it. Does, will this, will the, will this project stay with your company through the 25 years? Or is there a possibility to, and it stays with the person or with the property?
Property.
The property.
Pilot stays with the property, and that's because the property has to remain affordable for 40 years. And whether we own it or not, it has to remain affordable. And I think that's the key thing for the city. This is an asset that's being put in your, your community to help your citizens. It is not a, it's not a money-making venture. It's a, it's fulfilling a need. We intend to be here as long as we're around, but, you know, but yeah. We want, we'd like to do more in the area, so.
Have questions?
No.
So, this is a first reading, right?
It is.
So, there won't be a motion today?
There will not, no. It's first reading today.
Okay. Everyone good?
We've been through this one a couple of different times, so.
So, Tony, did you hear that this is first reading today?
Yes.
So, we, there will be no motion, okay. Do you have any questions for us?
I understand. No, I just want to say that I appreciate working with the city. You guys have been amazing to work with, Montiel and her folks. We're going to accept, we're working to get this done as fast as we can. We've got the information from Mishda we were waiting on, and so, we've got our lawyers working on getting responses. And just as fast as we can get the finance folks to get all the loan documents set up and those sorts of things, we'll be ready to rock and get this underway.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem, if I may, before we get to the next item, I'd like to request that council allow me to abstain from discussion and voting due to a relative owner of this business.
I have to, I have to read this officially, though.
Okay.
First.
Okay.
Okay, so this is ordinance number 23-495. It's an ordinance of the City of Alpena, Michigan, amending Chapter 86 Taxation, Article 5, Bingham School Tax Exemption by amending Section 86-99, duration. Be it ordained by the Municipal Council of the City of Alpena, State of Michigan, as follows. Chapter 86 Taxation, Article 5, Bingham School Tax Exemption, will state as follows. Duration shall be amended. The, this article, excuse me, shall remain in effect and shall not terminate for so long as the project remains subject to LIHTC restrictions, but not to exceed 25 years, provided that construction of the housing development commences no later than December 31st, 2024. And the effective date states that the provisions of this ordinance shall take effect 10 days after publication.
Thank you.
It's our first week officially.
So, so we will address Mike's concern, and I will entertain a motion to allow him to recuse himself.
I move that we allow Mike to recuse himself for the reasons given. From, I'm sorry, Items B and C on a new business, 14B and 14C.
Second.
Can we do them both at the same time in there?
No, we can. Yeah, that's fine.
So, Councilmember Noah doesn't vote on this?
He does not.
And motion to abstain. Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchuk?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes. So, Shannon, we flipped these, so we're going to do, B is now C. B is Allmarine and Storage Marina Shop Lease Renewal.
In November 2022, the city entered into a lease agreement with Allmarine and Storage of Alpena for the marine shop area of the Alpena Marina. The current lease is set to expire on December 31st, 2023. The original lease agreement in December 2022 allowed for renewal of the lease for five additional one-cycle periods if both parties agreed upon the unit price. These will be, this will be the second optional renewal if approved. After review with both parties, the attached lease agreement has been agreed upon. The only modification being the 2% increase of the rental amount prior, from the prior 450 to 459 rental plus the additional $75 of their portion of the shared utilities. This 2% increase is included in the original agreement as the maximum allowable increase. It is therefore my recommendation as the harbor master to renew the lease with Allmarine and Storage of Alpena per the attached lease and the above-stated modifications in the rental amount through December 31st, 2024.
Questions for Shannon?
That do the lease with Allmarine and Storage of Alpena as per the attached lease and the above-stated modifications in the rental amount through December 31st, 2024.
Second.
Councilmember Noah?
Oh, I'm saying, never mind. That was the test.
You passed. Councilmember Walchuk?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson? And Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Now, C is 2023, 2024 Travel Lift Operator and Winter Storage Service. Shannon, again.
On August 18th, 2022, the City of Alpena entered into a contractual agreement with Allmarine and Storage LLC to provide travel lift services for the Alpena Marina. In August 2022, the contract was renewed for the second of nine allowable renewals. The City of Alpena and Allmarine have reviewed the existing contract and agreed to an extension for the 2023-2024 voting season, ending on June 30th, 2024, with the following contractual compensation changes. I'm not going to read them all to you. The new rates and compensation are based on an hourly rate of service. Allmarine charges its customers correlated to the amount of time required for the lifting and lowering and blocking of the vessels on the hard. As with many industries, they have to, had, have had to increase their rates to accommodate current business climate. The employees from Allmarine have also increased their assistance to the city in regards to customer service and interaction. While the city is decreasing the funds received for winter storage, we are still adequately covering the, our expenses associated and allocated to the service, the insurance, the equipment rental, the overhead for the billing. This is largely due in part by the high, the higher-than-anticipated amount of size, amount and size of vessels that we, we have taken advantage of the service. A lot of this is credited to the workmanship and reputation of Allmarine. Based on the continued exemplary past performance of Allmarine and the increase in customers we are receiving with their reputation, it is my recommendation as the harbor master to renew the travel lift operation and winter storage services until June 30th, 2024, at the proposed contracted rates. In no case shall this contract be extended beyond August 31st, 2030.
Okay, Shannon, I just have one question. So, we started this contract in August 18th, 2021. But we're just taking it to June 30th of 2024.
We, that was one of the actual things that we discussed when we were doing the contract. That would give us adequate time if we could not come to an agreement for us to be able to make some modifications and contractors if needed.
Thank you.
They have no, and they promised me they have no intention of leaving us, however.
Good. I have no other questions.
I move that we approve the travel lift operator and winter storage services fee schedule as recommended.
Second.
Think you got to approve the contract, and we got to approve the fee schedule, don't we?
I thought it was, be two motions.
It's going to be two motions. You're going to need to approve the contract, I believe, and then we'll have to approve the fee schedule once we approve the contract.
Correct. Yes.
And he just made a motion for the contract.
Okay.
Said the fee schedule, too. I just was making certain that.
That was the fee schedule. I move that we approve the contract for the travel lift operator winter storage services as presented.
Second.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
And Councilmember Walchuk?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
If the new contract, since you've approved the new contract amount, I also need to recommend, as harbor master, to approve the attached fee schedule to reflect these new changes.
Attached fee schedule as printed to reflect the changes. Second.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchuk?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Frack's boat keeping Noah quiet. And a back.
And Shannon, request for purchasing policy variance.
In July, the city entered into a grant agreement with the Department of Natural Resources to replace the pump out at the Alpena Marina. Our proposal for this project was to purchase the equipment and replace it ourselves. When the grant was submitted, staff in the Harbor Advisory Committee selected a style of equipment we wanted to utilize in the marina. The concern we are having is that a straight purchase, is that this is a straight purchase equipment. The original price we received in used for the grant package exceeds our current purchasing policy limits for the quoted project. Our existing purchasing policy requires a sealed bid for anything over $10,000. While most of our vendors would... most of our vendors would solicit prices, are used to providing prices via quote, many shy away from sealed bid process as the documents are cumbersome and the process is unfamiliar. When we have worked with vendors in the past to acquire equipment through these means, several have either not provided a bid or have significantly increased our prices to cover the unknowns within the bidding process. While our existing purchasing policy is under review at this time, we hope to address some of these issues in the future. I believe it's in the best interest of the city to request a variance to the existing policy for this purchase. For this reason, I am requesting a variance to Council Policy Statement eighteen, purchasing policy, to allow for the solicitation of quotes and issuances for the purchase order of the equipment exceeding ten thousand dollars. It would not be, not waive the requirement for council's approval prior to the issuance of the purchase order, just the method of acquiring prices and wa, waiving issuing a contract in lieu of a purchase order.
Does anyone have any questions about that?
I have no questions on that. I think we run into this from time to time when we have to have a variance on that, so. I move that we approve the variance of Council Policy eighteen to allow for the solicitation of quotes and issue a PO to replace the pump out.
You, Shannon.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchek?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
I move that we adjourn to closed session to, one, discuss an update on water sewer litigation, and, two, collective bargaining agreement, the supervisory unit.
Councilmember Walchek?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Just like to make an announcement that we may have potential action on collective bargaining agreement when we come back.
This conference will now be recorded.
We are now back in open session.
I move we approve the collective bargaining agreement for Alpena Police Supervisory Division affiliated with the Fraternal Order of Police for a term of July first, two thousand and twenty-three through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six, and authorize Mayor Wallagora to sign the agreement.
Second.
Mayor Protim Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchek?
Yes.
Mayor Protim, I move we adjourn.
We adjourn.